First meeting in February, February 2.
You missed my birthday.
What's that?
You missed my birthday.
Oh, no.
Yeah, February 1st. We should have had it done.
We should have probably had the special meeting.
And you don't want an excuse to hear after your birthday.
So you're now 70?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, okay.
Again?
Look Jack Benny, look at that. Okay, well, happy birthday, Billy.
All things.
Okay, so first of all, we should have minutes, we should all have minutes for three meetings, a regular board meeting in January 16th, special board meetings on 19th and 29th. If you had a chance to review them, I'd take a motion to approve them as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes as permitted.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, okay, carry. Next, you should have the bills. Mr. Trecker, are there any additions or deletions?
No, there is not.
Okay. Total of six pages. Total of $41,005.94. Take a motion to approve the bills, be paid.
I make a motion, we approve the bills as submitted.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Propose, okay, motion carried. Ground clerk, we have any correspondence this week?
There's no correspondence.
Okay. Right along, you all have received a, from our administrator, a proposal about a new logo for the village. It has, do you all have that with you, or no, yes?
I put them all in mailboxes.
I think I got one, I got my mail today.
I got one.
You got one in front of you?
No. No.
You want to bring it up?
Sure.
All right, the administrator is proposing that we change the current logo that we have, the village of Rouse's Point, and you know it, two bridges and a sailboat, has the following date, and has a lot of stuff going on. I think he gave us an explanation of why he thought that would be important. I'm gonna ask him to go ahead and fill us, fill the board back in on why you think that this would be an appropriate change.
Sure, the previous logo serves for a substantial amount of time for a number of reasons based on current recommended guidelines in anything from social media to just out in the public. That previous logo does violate a number of different logo guidelines. This quote-unquote "new" logo is actually just an adoption of what has already been circulating out there for about a decade or so. In terms of image, it's a lot, I guess I'd say cleaner. It does look good both in color and in black and white. I updated the font a little bit, just to modernize it a touch, and tweaked the slogan at the bottom from what was there, "Charting a New Course," to "Charting Your Course." Necessary for a few reasons. One, we do have a new website coming online. The old logo doesn't really fit, nor it doesn't, we can't really put it on there. Second, we've got our, we're re-establishing our social media presence, and we're getting it put back on there as well. So in terms of laying the foundation for all the communication tools, we need to kind of roll out to the community. This is one of those foundational moves that really will, well, it's really essential to make all that happen. So, you know, that's the rationale for all of that, why we want to put it together and just, you know, we're not creating anything new. And frankly, a logo for a village can, can change, you know, even, you know, a year from now or whenever. This isn't in stone or concrete by any means. So it can be fluid. This is just to help us kind of give a fresh look and allow us to move forward with the various tools that we have.
Do you have any comments on this?
Do we have any other proposals?
Oh, I think it looks great.
Okay, dude, I think I sent you guys all of the, I know I sent you all the emails, my point, what I thought might, might hear from the public is the filing date always seems to be an important thing. Everything that Mr. Peter said about update it, simple, easy to put on, fit. I'm not sure if, if this what you want, is this how you see Rouse's Point being? Although, I don't know if it's marketed, but it's something to recognize the village as. I mean, I don't, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, what's your, your comments are? Trustee Arnold likes it?
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll go and put it outside of my truck.
Well, why don't you don't get a tattooed on your forehead?
Might have one on my arm, I don't know.
Okay.
That looks pretty great, I think.
Trustee Baffey, you would like to see us some more?
Well, I don't like "Charting Your Course," that doesn't make any sense to me. And it's, what's "Charting Your Course"? I like the, yeah, the other one said, "On beautiful Lake Shannon Plain," that kind of makes sense.
Well, it says "Charting a New Course."
It says "Charting Your Course." Whatever, it says "Charting Any Course," what does that got to do with it?
It's on the logo now.
It doesn't make any sense, that doesn't make any sense either. I mean, "Charting Your Course" or "Charting a New Course," where, what? What does that have to do with Rouse's Point?
I did have.
Well, when you moved to Rouse's Point, hey, just chart yourself around, whatever.
Doesn't make any sense to you either, in other words.
I think it looks great.
I think "Charting Your Course" is more appropriate these days than a gateway to something, because we don't want to just be a gateway, we want to be a destination. And that's what you want to attract people to, is you as a destination. In, in charting something, you are really emphasizing
The village.
The village, and let's go there, let's be charting your way.
Yeah. Well, you gotta go through a gateway to get somewhere. I mean, whether you're leaving or coming, coming or going. We're a destination, you know, we're a gateway from Catford.
The purpose of Rouse's Point is it is a gateway, it's the only reason it's here.
Well, I mean, I
Originally.
I don't know if there's, if we want to act on this tonight. If you'd like to maybe, you know, make some, make some of your own editorial changes, or, you know, what you suggest, and then see if the administrator can work those in, if he can find out how they work. Would you like to do that, or what's your pleasure here?
I think we ought to look at it a little longer, maybe get it out to public and see what they think about it. Maybe have a contest and see if anybody got an idea for a new logo.
Would we, do you think we'd have to change the logo on the signs in and out of the village?
No.
Well, why not?
What was that sailboat, what the hell? They're like $4,000 a beast for those signs.
Well, yeah. We could replace them when they wear out, I mean, they do wear out.
We're going up in style.
Back in the eighties. Going up. Okay, so how about, how about we take that suggestion, you bounce this off some of your constituents, see what they think in the public, and the next meeting, you know, you can report back what you have and see where you want to go with it. I mean, it'll take two weeks, too much to go on with what you suggest.
And you could put an article in the Sun newspaper, they probably go and say, you put a picture of this and say, "Rouse's Point's looking for comments and suggestions for a new logo, first time it's been changed in forty years," or whatever. I'll bet you got a lot of artists, artistic people in this village, you know, not me, I'm not one, but there's a lot of people that are.
Okay, so two weeks then? Is that the next four weeks that I'm taking it? Okay, two weeks, you guys talk it up, see how long it is, you get back, and just see what the public says about it? Okay, we'll do that. Thank you for doing this, Steve, moving us along in some direction. For what? Okay. You all remember that we received approval for a position, approval from Civil Service for a position that we sent down to have reviewed. We sent down the duties, you have that in front of you, senior recreation maintenance worker. And it was approved by Civil Service. Now, it's our job to officially approve it as a position in the village. This is a competitive position, meaning there will be an exam for this. And it provides a career step for people who are in this particular department in the village. On the union, we have tentatively agreed, as we all discussed, one of our, one of our special meetings, that the proposed salary would be $16.57 an hour, which is $2 per hour more than the recreation maintenance worker. So what we need to do tonight, and if that passes, you see the other thing in front of you, that's the addendum to the collective bargaining agreement, which is what controls the pay. If we agree with it, you see at the bottom of the page, it says $16.57. And on the back is for myself, for the local union representative, and for CSEA's attorney. They said they would accept that. This position is, does not have to be filled. And again, it's competitive, it's not gonna be, you'll, it'll reopen, there'll be an open competitive exam. And there'll be a promotional exam whenever they get it done. So for us to move forward, as we talked about, I'll need a motion to approve this position. It's a civil service competitive position of senior recreation maintenance worker at a salary of $16.50 an hour, that will be reflected in the collective bargaining agreement.
So you move, we do that?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, propose. Okay, motion carried. So we will be able to send this along to the union and be able to get that done. As you can see, it's not a, all it says is recruiting the position's gonna be in the contract, and that's where it is, so thank you for that. All right, a couple things, well, I guess they are on the new agenda. The library boiler was recently inspected, failed inspection. Old, it's about thirty-six years old, and it needs to be replaced. As you know, the, the library is heated with electric boiler that's existing there now. Our health court supervisors looked into it and found that, that they don't actually make electric boiler as big as that one is to heat the building, so it would require two smaller ones, and it would be about $5,000 to do this. That way they can keep the radiators. If not, we'd have to rip the radiators out and try to put, you know, electric heat in, but there's some issues with that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Belkey to give us, you know, what you found.
Well, like the mayor said, we had a boiler inspection with a company that comes in with our insurance company, and he wrote us up for some violations on the existing furnace. And unfortunately, it's thirty-five years, thirty-six years old, and you can't get parts for it anymore. So we looked at different options, I met with Trustee Arnold over there, we talked about radiant heat, regular electric baseboard, if you go that route, you'll have to, you'll lose a lot of bookshelves, and we know that they can't afford that, and they want to keep the looks of the old-style radiators. Unfortunately, the electric boilers are not energy efficient. I know that's a bad word to say, but, I mean, there is, within the building, we could do some energy efficient things to make the building more energy efficient, so the boilers won't run as long. But this is like for, the reason why we're bringing this up now is because of our budget is coming up into effect, and we need to make a decision on what route you want to take.
So the boiler, it could last six months, could last a year, or it'll last a month?
Well, I can limp it alone to last the rest of the year, but when they come back for another boiler inspection, it's gonna fail again, and it's a possibility we might lose our insurance.
Okay, so.
So they give me a timeline, you know, I talked to the guy and said, "Yeah, I'm looking into, you know, replacing his boiler," so he's kind of working with us. But if he comes back next year at this time and sees that same boiler in place with the same violations, I can't guarantee anything.
I know there's probably gonna be some comments of electric boilers, because we have a moratorium on installing them, but we do replace, allow people to replace existing.
Exist, is that correct? Yes.
Right, so what are you guys' thoughts on this? What, what are you thinking?
I think it's a go with Mr. Belkey's recommendation.
Okay, that's $5,000.
Well, one thing, we should, we should have the thing insulated.
Right, and we could maybe look to when, when, yeah, this other.
I've been asking IEP for about two months on this, I've been working on this.
Well, if, if Mr. Trudeau.
I've been just waiting for a guy to come up here to do it.
But you'd get, you'd have, you've got him planned to go in there and see what he can do, oh, great.
Yeah, I was working on this like in December.
So that'll work out perfectly, right? If he, if he, they said in a couple weeks he might be up, so.
Yeah, the question that I had with it was, like Brian was looking into this, we, I don't think we want another electric boiler unless they've improved them. I'm sure that they have improved them in thirty-six years, but we might even be better to get a, get an oil furnace, I don't know. For a commercial building that size, I don't know how you heat something like that in this day and age, you know?
Well, big spaces generally are used, you know, like warehouses and stuff, they're large, the natural gas are.
Yeah, propane's the ideal way, but we don't have any over there, so.
Right, and we have, we have the energy, so to speak, I mean, whereas we'd be buying oil to do it, so.
You can't put an oil, oil tank outside that building.
No. You have to put it in the ground.
And whereas a, you know, a commercial or a business establishment, I'm sure that the law's gonna require we have a system installed and have the tank inside of it.
Oh, yes. But that's gonna look like that, especially in the law, if you bury it, it's all right. And it used to be in the cellar. The tanks used to be in the cellar, but we took them out years ago. Were they just two seventy-fives, put two or three of them there?
There was two, two 275-gallon tanks.
Two hundred and seventy-five gallon tanks.
They're removed, and also the chimney, when they redid the, the roof, they capped the chimney, so the chimney's no longer in use.
Right.
That's another factor that you gotta look at.
So it also created a little carbon footprint that we don't have there now.
Right, and maintaining the, you know, the historic nature of the building, the interior, with the, you know, I think a combination of insulation that you're talking about, you talked about, and then, you know, the newer, newer boilers, if you're looking at a total expense for the boilers and what you have to do, about five grand, right?
Yes. Right now, I have, I have the one price for five grand, which I'm reaching out to two more companies to get additional quotes. It could be cheaper, you know? And in the quote, I noticed that he left me like a $500 buffer for miscellaneous fittings. Like he told me today, "I'm not saying you need them, but just in case."
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's something we're gonna have to look at in terms of budgeting for the library, and see if there's, you know, where there's room. I think you probably have been already through their budget sheets and stuff.
Yeah.
You know, you could maybe sit down with the administrator and our son and see, you know, if there's, if there's room there, but it's something we have to do, I think. We can't just, I don't think we go another year with that and have.
One thing to do, it's this summer, is the time.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
It's kind of the timeline we're thinking of.
So are we, we're, but we're in agreement that we should look, we should put the money in the budget to do that. Right?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great, that's all we needed to know, so we'll, we'll move forward with that. Finally, the water plant project, happy to say that it's our project manager, again, Mr. Belkey has told me that, that all of their work is basically done. Maybe one more fight they have to do. We, as I told you via email about the chlorine skids, they're being built from scratch. And we're looking at probably another five or six weeks before they're done. Is that your information? That's, that's what I was told by the chief water treatment plan operator, who talked to the people that were doing it. So they're not off-the-shelf items, they're designed, I mean, they're easy to install, apparently. You just hook them in, hook them like you say, the flow meter, and turn them on. But that'll be truly have to do, so we've done our part, so I think that you'll be, we'll be moving ahead with that as soon as those come in. And we can make an inquiry with, have, maybe with Emmerich, and find out, you know, what this status is, and if they can move it up a little bit since we're done.
Because it has, didn't we award that in December?
I'll ask, you know, when we awarded that bid?
I wanted to rebid it, give more time.
Yeah.
The PO was in January, right?
Yeah, I think that's, we had to cut the PO in January.
It's been like a month.
Yes.
Yeah, pretty close.
Yes.
So if they're saying five or six weeks.
Four to six weeks, they were saying, that's what they told me.
Or used up like close to four weeks, it should be here in a couple of weeks.
Well, it's hope so.
Week or two.
Well, I see the administrator, he did have a call tomorrow, just see with Emmerich, see what, what their timeframe ministry delivering that stuff. Kind of tell them, look, we're ready for it, you know, we need to get it done.
Ben, was there any question on the auto dialer, had it been ordered yet? Because a couple, three weeks ago, I asked Mr. Giallo, and the auto dialer had not been ordered yet. We can't start it. Have you heard anything?
I've heard nothing on that.
All right, you want to, you want to check into that?
Yep.
Okay, find out where we are in that, and then you can let, you know, you and Steve can work on making sure that that's, that that's taken care of. Trustee Dart said that's an integral part of it, the safety part of it. That, you know, obviously, it's got to be part of the testing that the health departments impose upon us, so we have to have a dialer line for that, so. That's, that's where we are in that. Now, I, I don't know if you noticed, it puts something on your name there on the agenda, Trustee Arnold, I put down a report on your trip to Ticonderoga regarding the Adams system.
Yes.
Can you give us a, I'll turn it over to you, give us a little background on what you found out?
Yeah, they're apparently, their backbar system down there, all their, all their Adams system is in a row, instead of ours is in a clump of four. And they have the same, same type of system and stuff, but theirs, when they backbars, it's through the top of the tank with air and stuff, and it drops down the whole thing like that.
They had to modify it.
Yeah, they modified it.
The relay was like ours, right? Health department made them change it.
Right, yeah, and they went with air and stuff like that. But now, what they're looking at, instead of stones, they're looking at stainless steel tubes with socks on. And they think that's gonna work out pretty good, and stuff. They haven't got them yet or nothing like that, they gotta manufacture them yet, and stuff.
Do we know the cost of those yet?
We have no idea.
Yeah.
They, they don't have a code yet either, because they're just doing this.
Do you know what the cost of conversion was to, just to put that, you know, the, the air tank, to build up the pressure and all that, like, what did they?
No, he didn't say nothing of how much the cost was, but it was very minimal.
Yeah.
Very minimal, just from their air tank to the, to the top of the tank, and stuff like that, so.
When we talked to the people from Adams that designed it, they said that the reason, obviously, the system's not working, is there's not enough force in the back, backflow, because it, you know, it doesn't fill up and build up pressure, so let me release it, it forces it down, hence the idea.
Yours down there fills up to the, almost the hull top of the globe, and stuff like that, with the water tank and stuff, and the air is right up there. They push the air in first, then the water goes up and makes a pressure. And when they release that valve, open it up to clean it and stuff like that, it shakes all the pipes and everything in the building, and stuff. And ours just to do that years ago.
Right, and we had it, as it was designed.
Right, yeah.
The issue we're having now with it is.
Is built on the bottom.
Right, and it's not very, it's not very efficient, so.
Yeah.
Once we're done with this project, probably a good idea to look into finding out what we, what we have to do to at least get the pressure up on one of them, and I was talking to Mr. Belkey today too, and, you know, it'll run on three of them. So you could take one out and, you know, change it out, see what, how many stones are actually broken, if the caps will come off the end of them or whatnot, and then, you know.
Well, the stones are expensive, and stuff like that.
Exactly.
But we could take and, take one out, and like I was talking to Johnny Bernard and stuff, we could take and bring them up in a store plant, fresh or marshall.
Acid marshall, yeah.
Acid marshall, fresh or marshall.
Trustee had gas used to do that, didn't he?
Huh, he used to do that.
He used to dip in muriatic gas, they had to play, some of them are broken when they get in there.
Right, yeah.
Truly said, the, the bottom cap is coming off a lot.
Right, a lot of them, it rust off and stuff like that.
We can't, we won't see it till we open it, but I mean, the next phase of, I mean,
The water plant, yeah.
Got to finish through this, but you've got, both of the new pumps are running good, and, and once you have the chlorine skids in, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at, you know, a system that is completely reliable with two brand-new pumps.
Right.
And we could still keep the Adams system online with three of them, three of the tanks, and, and start working on one of them, see how that, how that would work out, and then price out the compressor tanks, so.
Right, yeah.
We don't want to let you stay out of the water plant too long, Mr. Belkey, so, you know, get you back in there. All right, so thank you for that report, do you have anything else, sir?
Uh, yes, an upgrade on the high-des gas, do we, are we doing anything with that, or?
Yeah, we're switching over.
Are we switching over?
We're letting, we're letting the tank go down Okay. to get rid of the ethanol, and we're adding the non-ethanol gas.
Oh, okay.
It's only less than $800 difference, something like that, for the whole year.
It has enough, enough room to absorb the extra fire test. Perhaps Brian and I ordered to reboot it, won't have to have any more money put in his gas.
Okay, good.
I know you have to get it really drained out, and I've done this a lot. If you leave, like, like if you had a 20-gallon tank in your car, and you had it down to like five gallons of ethanol, and you put fifty, that, you'll still have ethanol, it's enough to do damage to your engine. It's almost unfused before you, before it'd be enough.
Okay. Then the fire department, I'd like to take and put, the fire department's got all their ladders out of there. In fact, they got a guy coming Friday to test all the ladders and stuff, and the electric department is having the line truck done, testing the line trucks and stuff. So I'd like to take and put the ladder truck up for scrap or sale, or whatever you want to do with it.
So you'd like to make a motion to have, to have the village clerk advertise for the sale of the, what year is it, 19?
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
Seventy-five, the Miracle of France ladder truck?
Yeah.
Do we have a minimum bid we're looking at of that?
Well, Arnold Junkyard already gave a $3,000 for it, so we have stats right now.
Okay, you want to set the minimum bid at that, that scrap value? They've taken a lot of the, oh, they've taken the diesel generator out of it, taken the ladders off it?
Oh, diesel, diesel generators still in there, you just gotta, John, John just gotta take it out.
Right.
Took someone sitting on the floor there, this afternoon.
Oh, yeah?
Well, I mean, he had, he has it already come out.
I have that.
And, and just for, everyone knows Arnold Junkyard doesn't have anything to do with Trustee Benjamin Arnold.
No, no.
Okay, so, I mean, this, this whole work clear on that. Does that sound reasonable, a $3,000 minimum bid, or do you want to, what, what? I mean, you had it evaluated, I was told by the village mechanic that it has zero blue book value, they can't really find the blue book. You're, you're into that kind of stuff, what do you think?
They have had real bad luck in the past selling used fire equipment.
And he said the engine shot on this, that's what he had to say.
He doesn't know, he thinks it might be if they took it apart, it's got a problem, but the thing is, you know.
Turn them down of oil every time you run it for about an hour.
Yeah, there's something down with oil, but it, you know. But that's not the point, the point is, every time we've sold one, we've sold the other seventy-five-foot ladder truck, we got a couple thousand for it, we sold two pumpers and got junk value for them, or less than scrap value. So I'd say probably $3,000 minimum, and see if you can get more than that.
Okay, so the, the motion made by Trustee Arnold is to allow the village clerk to advertise for the sale of the 1975 Miracle of France ladder truck with a minimum bid of $3,000.
As is.
Okay, yeah, I guess as is, in condition. Do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay, so that'll, we take care, we didn't say, the normal time to, to do this for, how many days do you put that in for you?
Two weeks, or a week?
No, it's three to seven days.
Three to seven days, because it's kind of.
Yeah, because it's gonna be, yeah, because it's gonna be, our next meeting will.
Yeah. You could have something back then. Okay, okay, Trustee Dart, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
No, I'm all set, thank you. Oh, no, I have one other, whoops, sorry.
Okay, back to.
I didn't make a copy of these yet, it's for a street limit sign, like from Maple Street, the digital, little, little digital signs that.
That's to tell you how fast it's going?
How fast it's going and stuff. I didn't get a chance to really investigate them yet, I want to go to Swanton, they have one over there on the pole and stuff, I want to get with them and stuff like that, but I had Donna did a lot of work for me to get these and stuff, but I'll give you a whole report next, next meeting, and give you a copy of what I have.
Including the costs, right?
Right, and the costs, yes.
And does New York State DOT have any, anything they can help us with on that, or is that not something that?
No, these are just, well, the average price, it runs from $2,700 to $5,800.
Okay.
All depends what you want on the sign. How you want it. No, these are just, well, the average price, it runs from, uh, 2,700 to 5,800, all depends what you want on the sign, how you want to program them and stuff like that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Trustee Dart?
Uh, just want to talk about the, uh, quickly about future purchases of equipment in our village, and, uh, basically how long we're keeping, we're basically keeping things right now until later, they're almost in junk value, um, I think the board ought to think about keeping equipment, going back to a five-year program on keeping equipment. Most of this stuff has anyways from a two to a five-year warranty on anyways, there's basic maintenance involved in just, uh, in the first few years of life of this equipment, and we can also, when we purchase something on state contract, uh, we've got considerable savings over retail, and we would have, uh, a pretty good shot at recouping most of our money back, if we get, get rid of it within five years, it's also attractive to, uh, to trade in versus what we're doing now, selling these for crap. There's a couple departments that are in need of new equipment coming up, and one in particular, uh, I was talking with the department supervisor to see if we can take three pieces of equipment and buy one piece that he can use for all functions. It's all going to depend on how we can use it, where we can use it, whatever, and, uh, I've asked for them to consider a trial run, getting a piece of equipment for a few days and, uh, trying it out, and see what we think of it before we even commit to anything. Two of the pieces of equipment that would be traded in, I think, uh, we can get some pretty good money on one of them and a fair amount on another one, and with the one particular department, there is money in the accounts right now to purchase equipment that would exceed, uh, the amount there would exceed the, the amount we would have to borrow from it, uh, after you include your trade-in allowances, so. I think in the future, we've got to think smart about our equipment and how long we keep it, and also, uh, the idea of merging equipment, cross-using it between departments and whatever facility, we can cut down, again, on, uh, our maintenance costs, our cost to purchase equipment, and whatever else, we're explaining to you guys a little, uh, you know, feedback on.
Well, I think years ago, the village was going to do that with the lawn mower for the rec center, they were going to lease them and stuff, and every three years, turn them in, or every two years, turn them back in and stuff, and they wouldn't even have to hardly pay any money whatsoever.
Well, I'm not sure, what, what are we talking about? Backhoes and dump trucks and pickups?
Our pickups, all, all the, uh, all the motorized equipment, all the motorized equipment.
For backhoes, about five years, that's what he said?
Yeah, yeah, if we can buy it for state contract, maybe 20, $30,000 less than retail, Brian, okay, and good-use backhoes are in the end.
Well, I got a price here for a brand-new pickup for Mr. Palky, uh, from Parker Chevrolet, $41,208, and it's down to $27,451. Well, it is an unstate contract. That's what a state contract, $27,000 down to $41,000.
So let's say we keep that piece of equipment for.
Well, I'll tell you, to at least.
Last years, and, and.
At least we get something for it.
We will get three quarters, at least three quarters of our money back.
We, we had a deal when we first got the, when we went to the Case kids' steering wheelers diesel, we had two or three off-brand ones before that, that Mustang and that CL40, and when we got them, we bought them state contract, and I think at the time they were about $18,000, we kept them three years, we traded them in through Dragoons, and he gave us within a couple of thousand dollars of what we paid for them, and we just kept rotating them, we had three of them, we just rotated like every year, I think we got a new one, and all of a sudden it stopped, and then you end up with old stuff. Yeah, that's what I say.
But when you were mayor. Is this, uh, is this part, is this, uh, something that we're bringing into the current budget, uh, projecting budget for next year to do this kind of stuff?
I have, I have on, on one department, the other department.
You and your department, so, yeah, okay, well, you know what, I hope that you guys, uh, have chosen that route, it's probably the most economical, so, that's good.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay, uh, Trustee Dart?
Nothing.
Okay, uh, other reports, Mr. Administrator, you got anything else for us?
Um, next week I'll be heading to the NICOM conference, uh, along with Trustee Batha, um, on Tuesday the 4th, 13th, um, a meeting with both Assemblyman Jones and Senator Little, if there's anything that, uh, you think would be valuable for me to bring up, please let me know.
We need money.
Ooh, yeah, that, for sure.
I would definitely bring that up, you know, get it up right away, how do you do, I'm the new administrator, I need some money.
But if there is, if, if there is anything, uh, you know, pressing that you think are elected, those elected officials need to know, certainly let me know, I'd be happy to bring it up.
Thank you. Mr. Treger, I don't have anything. Mr. Palky, got anything else?
Yes, just to talk about the water plant again, um, both pumps are running, we're getting excellent flows out of them, everything that we installed is working really good, and I want to thank my crews for going above and beyond for what they did, they worked hard out there, there's a lot of hea, heavy lifting and a lot of ingenuity out there, and I'll tell you, for doing it in-house, I gotta take my hat off to them.
And nobody got hurt?
Yes, same to the looks, a lot, a lot of.
Job, somebody could have got hurt.
Thank you very much.
Second thing is, uh, you notice we've been out on some of the side streets, we had replaced some sewer lines, um, we had a water main break last Friday up by, on Academy Street, um, there's four feet of frost in the ground, so, back, to you having the two backhoes, one has a jackhammer on it, comes in really handy. So, I just, if you're out and you've seen the guys working out there, stop by and just take a look at what those, what that equipment saves us in time and what it does for the village.
Great, thank you. We have a new recreation facility managed here at the meeting, Michelle, do you have anything you want to?
Uh, yes, uh, so tomorrow will be official week since taking the position, and I thank you all very much for the opportunity, uh, just working with Aaron and Ron, uh, building a good team at this point, um, very positive outlook, um, I have to say that they're amazing to work with, and we've been focusing on communication amongst us if you're on different shifts, um, making things a little bit more accessible for them, as far as logs and stuff that weren't necessarily there before, uh, kind of gives them all hands-on with the admin side of it too, and, you know, if they're receiving information that I don't receive, um, it's very helpful that they can access those forms, uh, so I've already implemented those, I created, we do a daily log, so whoever comes in in the morning, it's their task to walk the building thoroughly, they're looking for safety hazards, uh, special projects, cleaning, all of that stuff, so we type it out for the day, you take ownership, initialing it, dating it, uh, any comments as to why a project didn't get complete, you know, if you got pulled from it, so that way the next person coming in doesn't see this task and then not understand why it wasn't done, uh, if it's something that should have been done fairly quick, uh, so we definitely are very much on board with that, we've already seen, you know, I've seen many, we had two broken tiles, apparently had been broken for quite some time, if you walk through the doors right here, you'll notice that those tiles are done, um, I've had them look, they found some tiles, we grinded them down, and then they actually fixed them over the weekend, so that was a very quick turnaround, uh, the fire extinguishers were another quick turnaround, um, and so what we're focusing on now is, for me, trying to look at different ways of communication with the public, when I came in, I was a little frustrated that there was no way the public could access the schedule, uh, nor was there a way that I could access the schedule in a sense, everything was handwritten, um, so I know my prior position, we used a software called Easy Facility, you could buy the most basic package, and I think in this situation, given the usage of the ice rink, we wouldn't need really anything beyond that, but what it does is it allows, it's called Easy Leaks, and it allows the public to actually see games, um, figure skating, practices, public skating, all of that stuff, the public can go right there to this link and see it as we're entering it, uh, definitely something that I could train comfortably, Ron and Aaron, and whoever else, on that program, um.
Would that be on our website, or would it be specific?
It would be a specific software, so, yeah, it would be right to the computer, uh, and then everybody would be given an account and they can just sign in, uh, but it just kind of gives that public an idea, right now we're handwriting on a schedule in the lobby, uh, we do print out schedules, but they're in a bin, so we really don't have any other way the public is accessing this information, but it's also a great way that, say the weather is not the greatest outside, and then we have to cancel something, um, not only do you want to notify social media, phone calls, but you can actually go into this program and notify it that way too, uh, so overall, it's going to be a good experience for the public, for us to have that organization, uh, and if we had a situation, um, that there was a double booking, and that wouldn't occur with this program, it's almost impossible to create a double booking at that point, uh, unless somebody didn't enter something in, um, so I definitely am looking into that, because I think it's very, very important that the public does know what's going on at this point.
How much is the program going?
Not sure, I wanted to look at it today, but our internet is down, Ron's currently crashing our computer system to see if it'll come back up, thankfully PrimeLink does come tomorrow, so, um, if there's any issues, I can have them look at it.
Well, if we can't find the money, I'm going to the administrator, because he'll be looking for it.
Um, yeah, so we've just ordered hardware for the bleachers so we can be up to code, uh, with those, that should be in, we are going to pick it up, I saved $25 from picking it up versus delivering it, uh, so we already have the brackets and the piping's already done, John worked on that, so once the lumber actually comes, we should have the bleachers up to code this week.
Great.
As well, um, couple of safety hazards that I, um, have noticed in the sense of the building, which I can speak with, except for I'm just kind of looking into those, maybe finding different ways to kind of go about them that would make it safe for the employees, uh, just a couple of little things that I've noticed that was like, eeks, um, but, I mean, other than that, it's just been really learning, um, I drove the Zamboni and I didn't crash it.
Really? All the legs are still on the ice, so that's good, although they're getting kind of, a lot of ice going over the back of it, but that's good.
Yeah, so that was.
Did you see somebody walking around with a vacuum on their back now?
Yes, we have a new vacuum, um, I think Ron called it the Ghostbusters, I call it the Rocket, uh, it's actually kind of very ergonomical, correct, I mean, as long as you're putting it on correct and tightening it, but the other vacuum, I had used myself in the locker room, and I had to stop three times to empty it, because it just kept, the filter kept plugging on it, definitely not time-efficient, um, so having the new vacuum was an absolute godsend, and I used it right away, and everyone, uh, Ron and Aaron both used it, and they like it a lot, so, it'll get its use.
You keep this pace up, you're pretty amazing, we hope you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort. Okay, uh, open the meeting to any comments from the public, and that would be you, Mr. Cooper, you have anything you want to say to us tonight?
No, the only thing, the only thing I'd like to say is, uh, if we're going to, if you're entertaining the idea of changing the signs, and Tom stated about 4,000 bucks, I personally think that the, if we need a boiler in the library, things have to take precedent here.
That's a good comment, I, I think the, probably lines up with what we've been talking about, so, thank you, all right, uh, we're going to go into executive session, uh, here shortly to discuss, uh, deployment history of a particular employee, and also collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, which is the Taylor's Law, which is what we do our collective bargaining with, so, um, with the motion to, to recess, and we'll, we'll go into executive session after.
Motion to recess?
Okay.
Okay, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.